Welcome. We are at the City of Marshawn Council Chambers, 10 West State Street. Today's date is August 26, 2019, time is 5:30 PM. Notice to -- so we're calling the meeting to order, but let me give a notice to the public that the mayor and council welcome comment from the public during discussion of any of the agenda items. You're required to step to the mic, state your name and address for the record. A limited time used to present your remarks to three minutes or less so that others may be given the opportunity to speak. All speakers shall speak clearly and direct their comments to the mayor and city council in general and not to any councilor specifically. It's at the discretion of the mayor and council to respond to specific questions and comments or to have staff respond during the meeting. Now that we've been called to order, would those who are able please rise and join us on the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all else.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Who?
Here.
Isom?
Here.
Lamer?
Absent.
Martin?
Here.
Weren?
Here.
Cahill?
Here.
Goudy?
Here.
Very good. We have a quorum, and keep the Lamers in your thoughts and prayers. He's unable to be here tonight for reasons that require them. Would you have -- well, let's do the awards of service and then we'll circle back to mayor, council, and administrative comments if we would. Sarah, could you join us, please?
Sarah Rosenblum, Library Director. Are we starting with the awards of service? Sorry.
We are.
I thought we were going to start with Chief Tupper. Sorry.
Joa was first on the list here.
Ah, okay. Well, I'm very pleased to be here today to have two of my team with us, to thank them for their use of service to the library. I'm just going to start with Ann Ralston. Ann has been a library services clerk at the library for 10 years. Ann is the most cheerful, hard-working staff member that anybody could ask for. She never shrinks from a task, including, I will tell you, the messy, icky ones that sometimes occur at the library. Ann makes me smile, and she shares her kindness with all of our library visitors, and we are very lucky to have her here at the library. Joa is celebrating 20 years at the library. I would say of the nearly 3 million items that have circulated in our first 10 years, many of them are due to over the 20,000 kids who have signed up for summer reading each and every summer at the library. This summer, we saw over 1,300 kids registered this summer, and I know the majority of them went through the program and had an amazing experience. In June, 4,000 library visitors attended over 50 programs alone, and thousands, I think I might cutting out, thousands have visited the library these past three summer months. Of those 4,000 library visitors, I would say probably 80% of them attended a myriad of programs put on by Joa and her hard-working team at the library. The library was the first in the state to hire -- to host a Dia de los Niños, Dia de los Libros celebration, and for the past 15 years, we've averaged growing numbers now, about 700 kids come every year. I will tell you that Joa gives 110% to our kids, the library, and the community. I'm extremely lucky to have Ann and Joa on my library team, and I want to thank them both for their service to the community.
Thank you. It was fun to see the number of cars parked at the library again yesterday afternoon. That place still hops on the weekends. Chief Tupper?
Good evening. Mike Tupper, honored to be your police chief here in Marshalltown. So we are here tonight to thank Officer Byrne Jefferson for 15 years of excellent service. Byrne is on our uniformed patrol team, working the first shift, which is 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. He's a former SWAT member, Medal of Valor winner, all-around great guy, somebody that I'm very proud of, proud to call a team member, also proud to call a friend. Byrne does a really nice job for us, and we have a great police department here, and Byrne's a big reason we have a great police department here. So congratulations on 15 years, Officer Jefferson.
Thank you.
Should we do the promotion, too? Chief Ryerson is not -- oh, yeah, there. I'm sorry. Couldn't see you over there.
Good evening. Dave Ryerson, Marshalltown Fire Department. So we're here to accomplish a couple of things tonight. In July of this year, Lieutenant Ken Gradup retired after 29 years of service to the Marshalltown Fire Department. His retirement forced us to do a couple of things. One, to promote another lieutenant, and the other thing was to hire a firefighter to replace the person that was promoted. So the first thing I'd like to do is introduce Cody German and his wife, Brooke. And Cody and his wife live in State Center. They have one young son that's two years old. Cody started out as a volunteer fire department -- volunteer firefighter, still is in State Center. After doing that for a few years, realized he wanted to do it for a profession, and we were lucky enough to -- lucky enough to hire him. Are you going to read the civil service?
No, not tonight.
Okay. So the fire department has a lot of traditions, and one of the traditions is we have family members pin the badge on the firefighter. So if I can have Brooke pin him?
And you guys are all certified for CPR if something goes wrong, right?
Are the fire chiefs still paramedics?
There you go.
Okay. So that takes care of our new firefighter. So now let's talk about our new officer. So this is Nathan White. He and his wife, Kayla, also live in State Center. They also have -- they have two sons, ages 10 and 8. Nathan's been on the department for 13 years, and he just retired after 21 years in the Army National Guard, during which time he's been deployed to Kosovo, Iraq, and Afghanistan. So we're kind of lucky to have him back full-time, kind of eases the overtime a little bit in the department. Nathan did -- passed, was the highest-scoring candidate in probably one of the closest promotional exams I've ever been involved in. I feel very comfortable that he'll lead his crew very well, based on all his military experience. So if we can have his wife, Kayla, pin his badge.
Congratulations to both of you. About an hour and a half ago, I was over at the new fire station, police station, and Channel 13 was up here to do a story about the wonderful facility we have. It was fun to see the bays open with the big machinery in the fireside, and I just can't wait for you guys to get to the open house and see how nice that facility is. It's really cool. And the people that, as I told Channel 13 today, the people that put their lives on the line to save ours and keep us healthy deserve a safe and nice place to live, and by George, they have one here in Marshalltown now. Let's go back to the mayor's city and council administrator comments, I guess since the mayor's listed it first. Keeping my new tradition, I'd like to feed a couple by the name of Terry and Kathy Briggs. Kathy's been involved in about every volunteer thing you can be involved in in this town. And Dr. Terry Briggs was an OB/physician that was very well-loved. People hated to see it when he retired. He didn't slow down with retirement, and so recently, he's been on the board of directors of the hospital, and he's been the original president of the Trails Inc. and is now back on the reconstituted hospital board. That couple has done an awful lot of good things for this town, and I just need the citizens to know Terry and Kathy Briggs are good people, and we're happy to have them here in Marshalltown. Any council comments? City administrator?
Yes, I have a few. Wednesday, August 28th, this Wednesday, at 5:00 PM, we'll be having a special council meeting to discuss the Coliseum and hopefully find a path forward. So that agenda will be coming out tomorrow morning. And then following that council meeting at 5:30 at the Fisher Community Center is the Quiet Zone Open House, where we'll have the, basically the proposed improvements for each of the four railroad crossings, for people to come and learn more about what quiet zones are, what we're proposing to do. And that is from 5:30 to 7:30, or 5:30 to 7:00 at the Fisher Community Center.
Thank you. If there aren't any other comments up here, let's call for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
Any discussion? Not usually on this one. Let's call the roll.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Very good. Carrie, and when you get a chance, would you read those items, please?
Yes, Your Honor. Approve the minutes for August 12th in the bill list in the amount of $1,216,422.31. Rescued the civil service new hire list for fire lieutenant and transit operations assistant. Resolution accepting bid and authorizing the purchase of a 2020 Chevrolet Silverado for the street department from Carl Chevrolet for the price of $26,829.50, and declaring surplus to 2017 Dodge Ram. Resolution accepting bid and authorizing the purchase of a 2020 Ford F-350 truck from Jensen Ford for $29,813 for use in the parks department, and declaring property surplus, authorizing sale of a 2005 Ford F-350 truck for $1,000. Resolution approving 28E interagency agreement between the Iowa Department of Inspections and Appeals and the City of Marshalltown with the agreement expiring August 22, 2020. Resolution declaring property surplus and authorizing sale and disposal of street department machinery and equipment. Resolution authorizing negotiation of an approval of agreement with Region 6 Resource Partners for professional housing technical services relating to administration of a CDBG grant not to exceed $24,000. Resolution approving additional purchases for the police and fire building. Resolution authorizing hiring of Police Reserve Officer Roberto Gonzalez. Liquor license renewals, Old Timers Tavern, Hy-Vee Drug Store, Fiddle and Whistle Pub, Quick Star at 2500 South Center Street, Zamora Fresh Market, and Aldi.
Very good. Thank you. On to item G and those reports. Chief Tupper, you're back.
Hello again. Mike Tupper, Marshalltown Police Department. So I just want to say really quickly, congratulations, Roberto Gonzalez. That's a big deal for him to be joining our police force, and we're really excited to have him. So congratulations. So I've been asked to be brief, and I promise that I will be. You should have had in your packet our 2018 annual report. Needless to say, we were very busy. Everybody in our community was busy in 2018, and part of the reason the report is showing up to you in August is because we continue to be busy. So I'm happy -- first thing I want to say is I'm very proud of our police department. I hope you are, too. We have a lot of great women and men serving our community as both police officers and civilian employees. They do a phenomenal job on a daily basis, and I'm happy to be a very, very, very small part of that. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about our annual report.
That was brief. Wow.
Yes, sir.
Any questions? It was fun to see you over at the new building, too. It's just going to be so nice to have the cars parked over there and --
Yeah. We're thrilled. It's a beautiful building, and if anybody needs a workout tomorrow, I can get you some boxes. We can use some help.
If I hadn't had that hernia and stroke, I would have gone on. Okay?
Chief, I'd just like to ask and comment further with you and Chief Ryerson. I know there's an open house groundbreaking, or not groundbreaking, but ribbon-cutting in September.
Yes.
What plans are on the table for multiple
Yes.
open sessions?
Worst-kept secret in Marshalltown is that we're having a ribbon-cutting on September 24th. We've been waiting to officially announce that, but at September 24th, 6:00 PM, is the ribbon-cutting event, and we'll have an open house tour that night. That's going to be the first one. And watch for an announcement. We're going to be pushing out more information about that event. Chief Ryerson and I are discussing appropriate times to schedule multiple additional open houses, at least two to three more sometime in early October, so that everybody in our community has an opportunity to see this beautiful building. So those will be the official opportunities. I've already taken a lot of people through. The chief's already taken a lot of people through. Anybody wants to see it, call me. I'm the easiest person in Marshalltown to find. Send me an email. We'll -- large group, small group, actually, small groups work better, but we'll get you through that building. Everybody needs to see it. I promise, we're going to have lots of opportunities.
Thank you.
That was an easy one.
Good. The report looks good again this year.
Yeah. Staff puts a lot of time and effort into this report. Alicia Hunter manages the whole project, and this big project, a lot of people involved, and they did a great job.
Okay. Well, thank you. And as you're taking your seat, I have to commend you again on the outreach that we see, you know, the coffee with the cop, the 60 or so citizens that came for the Citizens Academy. That just keeps growing every year, and it's a testament to you and your force and to the fire department force that we have good people working here, and the voters recognize that, and you've got a new home.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
On to item H, resolutions H1. Would you read that one, please, Madam Clerk?
Resolution approving open container and liquor license for Oktoberfest.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Good evening. Dwayne Dixon, Marshalltown, or Oktoberfest president for 2019, 200 South, 11th Street. We are working on wrapping up our final details and plans for the four-day weekend for September 26th through the 29th. Our plan currently is for having live music and open bar on Center Street and the Main Street District for Friday and Saturday night. The map that I'm showing here would be the layout for Friday night. It would have barricades at all the intersections and alleys. Our plan is to put the main stage on South Center Street, food vendors along Main Street, and be able to have open container on the streets through the car show and food vendors. And then Saturday night, we would scale that down a little bit and have it for the food vendors and stage area in front of the stage itself. There would be no plans for alcohol served on Thursday or Sunday. We're planning for having typical ticket sales for beer purchases, so that you're not actually paying with cash. That separates it for us. 21 to serve, 18 for selling the tickets. We'll have the signs in the barricades utilizing the construction fence around the perimeter of the courthouse, and then using the buildings for the rest of our perimeter. The rest of it would be typical wristbands, ID station, minimum age signs, and all that.
Similar to the Jason Brown concert?
Similar, other than the location.
Right. And as I understand it, we didn't have any incidents or problems with liquor or beer at the Jason Brown concert? Okay. Let's open it for questions from the councilors.
I have one. Will there be police availability during that, off-duty police?
Yes. We have plans with the police, or coordinating with the police for a few extra people on call and to be floating through the event
Very good. Thank you.
For both nights.
Other questions? Public comment? Roll call.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Who?
No.
Isom?
Yes.
Very good. Carrie, thank you.
Thank you.
And thanks for volunteering to be the president. Madam Clerk, item number two, please.
Resolution approving a facilities master agreement with Youth and Shelter Services of Marshall County.
Entertainer motion?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion?
This is an item that, as we have been going through sort of the process of the police department moving out and coming up upon being able to transfer the property to Youth and Shelter Services, and sitting down with Dave Daters, our facility superintendent, there are a number of things where there need to be some sort of agreement spelling out what things would look like. Ultimately, this agreement buys us time to decide what to do with the boiler system, really pending sort of what our future would be with the fire station, as well as talks about shared expenses for the elevator, annual maintenance, and other things. And so we think we've covered everything that could possibly come up, in that we have an agreement here that is sort of the precursor for the mayor and probably someone from YSS being able to execute the purchase agreement.
Any questions or comments? Any public comment? Roll call it is.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Who?
No.
Isom?
Yes.
Very good. Carrie, thank you.
Thank you.
And thanks for volunteering to be the president. Madam Clerk, item number two, please.
Resolution approving a facilities master agreement with Youth and Shelter Services of Marshall County.
Entertainer motion?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion?
This is an item that, as we have been going through sort of the process of the police department moving out and coming up upon being able to transfer the property to Youth and Shelter Services, and sitting down with Dave Daters, our facility superintendent, there are a number of things where there need to be some sort of agreement spelling out what things would look like. Ultimately, this agreement buys us time to decide what to do with the boiler system, really pending sort of what our future would be with the fire station, as well as talks about shared expenses for the elevator, annual maintenance, and other things. And so we think we've covered everything that could possibly come up, in that we have an agreement here that is sort of the precursor for the mayor and probably someone from YSS being able to execute the purchase agreement.
Any questions or comments? Any public comment? Roll call it is.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Who?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thank you. Carrie, as well? When you can, would you read the next item, please?
Resolution authorizing the conversion of Highway 14 recall-detecting loops to recall-detecting cameras and purchasing equipment from mobile trucks for $98,187.
Is there a motion first?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Good evening. Justin Nickel, Public Works Director. As the city clerk just read, this is for the replacement of eight of our signals using newer and better technology with the video recall as opposed to the magnetic loops that go within the pavement. I could stand here and give you a whole spiel, but would ask for your approval and be happy to answer any questions. I would ask, I am going to make you give just that little bit of difference between the loop, what it did, and what the cameras will do in the future. So the loops are a device that senses the magnetic field when a car pulls over it on the pavement. So there are the occasions where you might have a motorcycle or something to that effect. We do have the occasional complaint about it's not being detected. Most of the time, usually it is if you park in the right place. That being the case is you need to park in the right place. The video detection is just that. It's videos that are, video recorders that are mounted on the traffic signal poles. They do help our operations in, you can use them to count traffic, you can use them to view what's happening at an intersection. The video thus detects when a car pulls into the area and shows that there's a void, or the video changes, and that's how it actually operates the signal, by that video detection. Is that sufficient? I think so. Okay. I've always thought there was something there. If I just pulled up a little further, maybe it would trigger that light. Sometimes that's the case. Sometimes not.
Is there any video storage?
There is not with these. Well, that's not part of the proposal right now. For our, for public works purposes, street purposes, these are solely to operate the traffic signals. We certainly could go to that level of buying servers and keeping video storage, but I want to make clear that it is not a red light camera. It simply operates the detection of vehicles so that the signals can cycle through the different phases.
So you'd have to be actually monitoring the video to catch a collision, for example, in traffic?
That's correct.
Okay.
Which I would say ultimately would be my goal, but that might be a 20 or 25-year goal to actually get us to that point.
We do have cameras that do detect them on Highway 14 at the intersection of Anson and --
The Crime Stopper cameras? Is that what you're speaking to, Mr. Mayor? Yes.
Okay.
One other question. Is there any continual timed, I mean, do these all replace the time cycles that would be on? That's correct. So right now, the work has gone through on Highway 14, and we've removed most of the loop sensors. So right now, our traffic signals are a little antiquated and are simply running on that of you may pull up in your car to one of those intersections. There is nothing sensing that you pulled up in your car. It is simply running on a time loop that will give you the green when the timer cycles through its Okay. Correct. And as Bethany said, there's no monitoring of this. It is just done via, I mean, almost like a light sensor when it senses They are cameras. I'll go back to But they are cameras, yes. Yeah, absolutely. We could go to that next level. I think most of you know I came here from suburban Kansas City. We had a very sophisticated system, probably beyond the means of Marshalltown at this point. Like I said, maybe a 20 or 25-year goal. Currently, these simply relay electrical signal back to the traffic signal box that's located out there with the traffic signal, and tells that traffic signal to change from green to yellow to red, and to give the other direction the green. Thank you.
Are there questions up here? Public comment? Roll call.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Who?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Thank you. Would you go to item number four and read that resolution, please, Madam Clerk?
Resolution approving a planner position with partial grant funding.
Move for approval, Your Honor?
Second.
Thank you.
Michelle Spahnheimer, Housing Community Development Director. We did talk about this at your last council meeting. Just entertain if there's any questions that you might have for me.
Councilors, questions? Comments?
Question here. With the probable approval of this, what about the next fiscal year? How are we going to be able to fund this?
So was it, what I included in your memo was kind of outlining the rest of this fiscal year, which we're proposing the local option sales tax for the portion of wages that are not grant-funded. And so the lead grant funding, which we're proposing that that pay for a portion of those, that will continue until September of 2022. So we have approximately three years left that would be partial grant funding. The remaining balance would be in next year's general fund budget for the wage portion, and then the employee benefit levy for the benefit portion of the wages.
I understand. Thank you.
Other questions up here? Public comment?
Thank you.
Call the roll, please.
Goudy?
Yes.
Who?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Very good. Carrie, if we ever needed a planner, this is the time to have one. So thank you for that vote. Would you read the fifth resolution, please?
Resolution of support for the application to the Iowa DOT RISE Grant Local Development Program for the Edgewood Extension.
I move for approval.
Second.
Discussion?
This is also related to an item that was on your last agenda, where we secured Bolton and Mink to do the preliminary plat for the Edgewood Extension, which would divert truck traffic off of Highway 14 and on to Marion Street near JBS. and on to Marion Street near JBS. And so, the RISE grant is due this Friday, which would be 50% for eligible expenses. And so, we need this resolution of support in order to be able to submit the application.
Thank you. Questions or comments? From the public? Roll call.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Carrie, very good. Thank you. And the sixth and last resolution, please.
Resolution approving an economic development grant to Shane Eckler for demolition.
Is there a motion to approve?
I move for approval.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion?
This is one that really came up kind of last minute, but has quite a few different purposes that it achieves. This is looking at providing 20% of the cost of demolition for a project, an area that is in within the downtown urban renewal area. So, we had done this previously for Dr. Sundrum, Avita Properties, on the old funeral home, and for Dave Thompson, Thompson True Value Site. Mr. Eckler has acquired 111 North Second Avenue, which was actually a property that was on a list that we were trying to acquire because it was heavily damaged in the tornado and had been abandoned. And so, he was able to make things happen sooner than we were and has his quote that is attached for the demolition and then the backfill of the site. And so, 20% of that is $7,050, which saves us from some additional work and expense that we were going to have in trying to acquire this property as well.
Any questions or discussion? I should be asking if the clerk has received any written comments about it.
No, Your Honor.
Okay. Any public comment? Roll call.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
No.
Thank you, Carrie. Now, we move to item I, and that's resolutions regarding change orders. Would you read the first one, please?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Point of order. I would request that item number six be taken off any list and dealt with separately for a resolution and a vote, but further explanation is needed, I feel.
Okay.
Your Honor, would you like me to read the first one?
I would.
Resolution approving contract change order for the Police and Fire Headquarters Project Plumbing and Mechanical for Tony's Plumbing and Heating, an increase of $22,798.08.
I would invite a motion to consider all of these resolutions because they're related to the same thing, except for the one that Mr. Martin suggested that we...
So moved.
Second.
Good. Roll call on that one.
That was motion by Isom and second by Weirin.
Can I ask a question first?
Sure.
Are these, any of these related back to our previous problem?
They all have some level of connection to our Mason issues, yes.
Any other questions? Otherwise, let's call the roll on the motion to consider them all, except for the one.
Martin?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Let's go ahead and have the clerk read the items, then skipping the one.
Okay. 2019, 221, an increase for plumbing and mechanical for Tony's Plumbing and Heating, an increase of $22,798.08.
And number two?
Number two, contract change order for Police and Fire Headquarters Project Fire Suppression for Blackhawk Automatic Sprinkler, increase of $675.38.
Thank you.
Number three, increase of $5,959.56 for DeVries Electric for Electrical Communications and Security. Number four, contract change order for concrete foundations for Caliber Concrete, increase of $2,462.50. Number five, resolution, contract change order for Garland Construction General Supplies, increase of $2,765.43. Skipping number six. Number seven, approving contract change order for the project Aluminum Storefronts for Foreman Ford, increase of $16,191. Number eight, gypsum wall assemblies for Hillsabek Shock, increase of $15,902.53.
Justin, are you comfortable talking about those seven items in general?
I am. As Counselor Hoop asked, do these relate back to our masonry issues? The majority do. Starting with number one. For Tony's Mechanical, there was a control panel that needed to be replaced, was still functional, but had received some water damage as a result of our lack of facade with no mason in the interim, and thus, the warranty would have been voided. So, the chiefs and myself thought it was best to go ahead and replace that control panel so that we had a piece of equipment that was warranted and would work. We certainly can seek restitution or reimbursement from our mason as we get on to that phase of where we're going. Also had some ductwork modifications per the HVAC punch list. I guess I wasn't privy to that, and I don't have anybody from story here backing me up tonight, but I have no reason to believe that story would recommend something that wasn't worthwhile. Number two, Blackhawk Automatic Sprinklers. Looks like the plans might have been missing a sprinkler head that was necessary to go ahead and add to make sure that we complied with the fire code.
You kind of want to do that in a building that houses the fire department?
Yes. Yep, that's what it looks like from the additional documentation that I have. Three, increase of about $6,000. As I remember, it also had some planned modifications that were necessary to upsize the breaker box. Probably a little lack of study when we were still in design phase to make sure that we had enough capacity for the washer extractors that the fire department uses to wash their equipment when they're done fighting a fire. Number four, Caliber Concrete. Looks like it's masonry support rework, so either something that needed to be done that either was left out while we waited for mason conclusion, or something that needed to be reworked while the masons were, the new support masons were on site. Number five, Garland Construction. Looks like mostly due to a lobby display case. The mayor mentioned he was over there earlier this afternoon. One thing that the public will see and the council have seen, will see, is that we have a display case in the lobby to display fire department artifacts. Looks like we needed some rework and some caulk as necessary to those, to that display case. Would you like to go to number six now, Counselor Martin, or skip over and come back to it?
I think we needed to skip over it.
Okay, very good. Number seven, looks like we had some damaged glazing, which is the, on the storefronts or the big windows in the lobby area. This one, to me, is certainly attributable back to our mason. So, we'll get around to that as we carry forward with that negotiations. And then, last was Hillsabek, number eight. And I have to apologize, I'm not sure I have the detail on that, what that change was about. Bear with me for a second.
Does it say gypsum wall assemblies?
Yes, I mean, something to do with drywall and rework. Oh, additional membrane and steel framing. In the interim, while we were working out our masonry issues, we had some exposed plywood and exposed facade that would have been covered by brick had we completed the masonry work on time. This was for additional vapor bearing, vapor barrier waterproofing, again, to ensure that we had a product that we were happy to have when we were done, to make sure that it didn't have water issues. So, that would be the reason for that change.
Is there a motion to approve resolutions 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 7, and 8?
You've got one.
We have it.
And voted.
Yep.
And a second?
Six to consider.
Well, can we vote on those seven first, then consider? Oh, we did. Okay. Good thing I got you here to keep me in line. Let's visit about number six then.
Resolution approving contract change order for the Police and Fire Headquarters Project Membrane Roofing and Wall Panels for Blackhawk Roof Company, increase of $11,351.10.
Justin, while I realize that most of these things are connected to Serrato and the mortar and the mislaid bricks, if you will, I find it difficult to accept and understand how a foundation with brick and so on can affect the roof at the very top of a building. We were very precise
Sure.
on the membrane and so on. I don't see how a redo, redo of that, a repair of that, or additions to that become necessary.
Mm-hmm.
Whose fault is it?
This I would attribute back to our mason as well, maybe to carry out your thought. I don't have a picture, but our facade really started with a brick from about ground level up to, let's say, about eye level in general. And then, we had some metal paneling that went from eye level about up to the sill height or the bottom of the roof. And then, so on this one, I believe, and again, I don't have story here to back me up tonight, but we had some metal wall panels that were installed prior to getting the masonry work done, that then ultimately needed to be taken off to get the masonry work done. And I believe the membrane roofing was tucked underneath the sill to try and keep it waterproof over the winter of 2018, 2019, while we waited to solve our masonry issue. So, all of this would be attributable back to the mason and the lack of getting that work done in the fall of 2018.
Okay, I understand and accept. I also know that we've paid for that already. Will we seek to achieve compensation for the mess-ups that have occurred?
That's always been our intention and something we've discussed, is that the masonry work is now complete. And so, that's a conversation that I believe will be ongoing over our meetings this fall and maybe even into the winter, is the amount of delay claims, the amount of damage claims, the amount of rework claims that we have due to, the beginning with Carrato's masonry work and then moving on to the bonding company and their replacement mason, versus what we still have remaining on what we have yet to pay them, what we have for retainage, and ultimately, is there any insurance assistance? Is the bonding company willing to negotiate on what damages we have versus what work was completed? So, the answer is yes, we intend to. As I've cautioned, we will see what we can actually reclaim as we go forward.
Understood. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Public comment? Roll call.
Do we need a motion?
Sorry, a motion.
I move for approval of that, the membrane change order.
I'll second.
Let's vote on that.
Martin?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Very good. Carrie? Onto the next item J, which is public hearings with resolutions. Would you read the first one, please?
We have a public hearing on accepting federal funds, grants, and resolution approving inter-local grant agreement for the Iowa Burn Justice Assistant Grant Program, $18,918, split 50% with Marshall County, to assist with law enforcement programming or equipment purchases, and approval of memorandum of understanding to share grant funds with Marshall County.
Thank you. I'll declare the public hearing open at 6:13. Madam Clerk, did you get any written comments?
I do not have any written comments.
Are there any public comments? Now, time for staff review.
Okay, so this is a familiar item. We receive this annually from the federal government, and the amount that we receive is generally based on a formula that involves our crime statistics. So, we're receiving a little bit less money this year, which is a disappointment, but that means our crime stats were down a little bit, too. So, that's good, right? So, we're going to use our share of the money. We have to split this $18,918 with the sheriff's office evenly. The police department's going to use our share of the money to repair and enhance some of our training equipment at our outdoor firearms range. That will help us enhance our training program for our police officers. I believe the sheriff's office has chosen to use their share of the money for some body camera and vehicle camera equipment. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Seeing none, I invite public comment. And seeing nobody rise, let's vote on, or no, I guess we declare the public hearing closed at a record time of 6:14. And... Do we call for a motion on that one?
I move for approval.
Thank you. Second. Thank you. Any other further discussion up here or out there? Let's vote.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Carrie, very good. And the last public hearing, would you read that one, please?
Public hearing regarding, well, this is actually, we had a public hearing, this is, we need a public hearing for the Flint Hills Holdings Development Agreement.
Okay. I will declare that public hearing open at 6:15. Madam Clerk, did you receive any written comments?
I have not.
Are there any public comments? Staff review.
Flint Hills Holding is the group that has partnered with Landover to basically build a 50-unit income-restricted multifamily complex on the Senior Citizens Center site. When we had communicated at the beginning of the month, they said that they were ready to go and that they were ready to do that in order to have a public hearing set at the last council meeting in order to have it here tonight. Since then, that is not the case. They are not quite ready. They're still working through some different costs and things on the site. And so, when we consulted with Bob Johnston, our legal counsel for urban renewal-related things, he said, you publish the public hearing, you might as well accept comment on the development agreement. And then, you know, when they're ready, or when the council is ready, then this could come back up without having to hold another public hearing unless the terms of the agreement had changed related to the dollar amount that was proposed. And so, I don't foresee that happening because that dollar amount is based off of a calculation on the property, what it's likely to produce in a 10-year time period in incremental taxes. And so, we are here before you tonight just for the public hearing on the development agreement, but you'll notice that the resolution to follow is deferring consideration of the agreement until a later time.
Are there council comments?
Does this in any way jeopardize the project?
I would say it doesn't. I think, you know, this sometimes happens in development projects where, you know, you're hearing one thing from a developer about how ready to go they are and how fast they are, and then, things just don't line up to meet with our meeting schedules when we've already sort of set things. So, I would say at this point, no. They know that this is, this is out there. It was just when they reviewed the draft of the agreement, they said that they weren't ready for this to move forward at this point.
Other comments up here?
Have they given any timeframe of when they will be ready?
They haven't. You know, one of the things that we're really missing on this one is a true site plan for the project. We have some things along with this one that make it a little bit more difficult to be ready in that we have to have the building torn down and be able to transfer the land to them. They have not actually transferred any property because there are two other parcels that they, from private owners that they needed. So, I would say that we're still in kind of a holding pattern where they're still getting their ducks in a row and trying to figure things out at this point.
And the timeframe for the Senior Citizens Building, do we have that yet, the demolition?
Demolition, we've been told that it would likely happen two weeks following asbestos abatement, and asbestos abatement is nearly complete. So, we won't, we probably won't have too much advance notice on when it will actually happen.
It will just come down. Well, I guess my comment on that is, again, I think we need to do whatever we can to work with the developer as far as meeting their timeframes, because this is an important place that we're looking for that affordable housing in our downtown area that we lost due to the tornado. And so, I certainly want to give them the appropriate time if we need to, but also to be pushing to get this project completed.
Thank you. Other comments or questions up here? From the public? I'll declare this public hearing closed then at 14, or no, 19 after the hour of 6:00. And is there a motion to defer the consideration of an agreement?
So moved, Your Honor.
I'll second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. That takes us on to the discussion items K. The first one is the discussion about the zoning amendment to the regional commercial permitted and special uses. Would you start us off, please?
Absolutely. Michelle Spahnheimer, Housing Community Development Director. So, this is a discussion item before you that has been presented, the application was presented to amend our regional commercial... to amend our regional commercial zoning district, which as you recall from prior discussions includes the middle, Meadow Lane Center, traditionally our Kmart center area, as well as the Marshall Town Center, which would be the mall area. Those are our two regional commercial districts. The amendment is to allow for exterior um, storage units, so the leasing of mini storage units within that district uh, as a special use permit. So previously, when we had discussions on this, um, we were, we had a proposal that was before you as a permitted activity. Um, so the change between what we discussed um, back then, which also included the interior um, availability, is now to look at the use as a special use um, consideration. So the planning commission uh, did meet, uh, they had an initial discussion on this as well as a public hearing at their last meeting uh, on the fifteenth. And uh, the recommendation from the commission uh, with a four to one uh, vote on that was to uh, not move forward uh, with a change. And so that motion did fail at their level to accept um, that change. And so based on that recommendation, um, and with consulting uh, with our, our legal counsel on that, we felt that the best option to be before the council at this point was as a discussion item um, where the council could provide some direction on how to proceed uh, with the application. And so I know that we do have uh, the applicant um, that has submitted the request is here. Um, and um, he um, intends to give me a presentation and, and some conversation about their request. And then I will be looking for uh, some council direction for how you would like to proceed moving forward after that.
Does anybody object to having the applicant uh, take the microphone next? Okay.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, Randy Dixon, U-Haul Company of Iowa, sixty-three ten Douglas in Des Moines. I wanted to just address a couple of things quickly. One being a letter that, that you received that in part said that allowing this change is going to lower the standards of beautifying your community. I can assure you that it will be far from that. Everything we're going to do is, is going to be aimed at, at beautifying that property. In fact, since nineteen forty-five, U-Haul's been in business and we're in tens of thousands of communities and neighborhoods across North America. And I believe that organized political society wouldn't allow us to operate if we lowered the standards of any community. Our core value belief is that we work at never forgetting that our quality self-move, self-storage, and closely related services and products are to improve human lives. We work at never forgetting that all of these collective services and products are for the do-it-yourself moving public. Before we get to the discussion on this, I also want to introduce Chris Hall, who, who is our manager at the facility. Um, he's just starting his career with U-Haul. He's um, put down roots here. And uh, I believe he's going to be uh, a good manager for us. He's a veteran and uh, um, I, I look for good things uh, for Chris. I'd like to try to look at this in, in terms of display because that's really what I'm trying to create with these uh, storage units out front is, is display. Uh, we really don't need any more units to rent. We're going to have over six hundred interior units. So what we're trying to do is, is create a display. And uh, just quickly, from a memo uh, dated October sixteenth, nineteen sixty-seven, it addresses a display uh, at U-Haul Centers. U-Haul rental equipment in use and on display is our number one advertising medium. We also know that a product well displayed is half sold. That's why five-star displays demand our immediate, ongoing attention. Every day, more than one hundred million people pass by U-Haul Centers and dealerships. That's a lot of prospective customers. Sooner or later, these people will move or will have friends who are moving. Think of the impact that a clean, good-looking display has on these prospects. And uh, hopefully, we can go through some of the discussion points that were in the uh, P and Z packet. I believe them to be all good, valid points, and I can address any of them if you'd like me to.
Questions or comments? Thank you. Any further discussion? Michelle?
As I mentioned, um, what I would be looking for is some direction from the council um, on how to proceed. Uh, the memo that I included in your packet did give at least some options for consideration on how to move an action um, forward or reconsideration, um, however you so choose. Certainly, those are not limited motions. If you have others, those are your prerogative. But those were at least some that I saw as ways to, to move through to the next step.
Any suggestions to Michelle or the staff? Or questions up here?
Just point of clarification, if this were to go motion to and stop application, application from going any further, that doesn't prevent it from coming up again in the future. What is the process?
Um, generally speaking, with a ordinance um, change, our um, code does say that a, a issue can't be brought forward again for a year's time unless there's a substantial change to that request. So the reason why we're seeing this again now is it went from permitted to special use. But if it was the exact same request to come forward, it would need to wait twelve months.
Your Honor, are you going to call for a motion at this point? Are you going to seek further input and comments?
E- either one works. A motion's probably more direct.
I was going to ask one question if I could. Motion three, that you described sending it back to the commission to develop the criteria for the special use approval, would that limit it to just the Kmart area? Or does that still include both the, the mall property and the Kmart mall?
It would include both. It would include all regional commercial districts. Um, and then the language for a special use permit may live in a, a different section of our code where we have a special um, special uses outlined and some language there. So it would kind of cross those boundaries in a specific code number section it would, but it would apply to both uh, jur- or any jurisdictions that are zoned regional commercial, which right now we only have the two, not to say we might not have others in the future.
So at this point, any action we take affects both of the, the properties that we're talking about?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions, suggestions, or motions?
Your Honor? I would say I, as a councilperson, and I think the Chamber of Commerce as an entity, welcome new business. And would certainly welcome with open arms the U-Haul operation. However, our stance and our continued support of our ordinances deserve careful consideration. And therefore, I will offer a motion at this point. I would move to deny American Real Estate Company's application seeking amendment of the city's RC Regional Commercial District regulations related to allowable uses as it deems necessary to accommodate lessers of mini warehouses and self-storage units. So that in essence, if I get a second, that will deny this process going forward.
Okay, Will, is there a second?
I'll second it, just to get to vote.
Okay. Any further discussion about the motion up here among the councilors? Any public discussion?
I would like to understand the process a little bit while he's on his way up. So this is a discussion item. So the motion is just on the discussion item. Does this mean it would come back or it would not come back?
No. If this, if the motion as presented were approved, it would not come back.
Okay, thank you.
And I think we have started in the discussion items by giving staff direction. We've, we've turned that into a motion and second and vote. Yes, sir.
Just making sure.
Mark Mitchell, Marshall Town, Iowa. I would strongly encourage the city council to uh, reconsider the U-Haul to let them come in. We were up in Baraboo, Wisconsin, two weeks ago, and they have a site up there. I'm not sure if it was a Kmart building, but they had outside areas that were for storage. Looked tremendously beautiful. They had trucks outside. They had them lined up all in a row. It, it was tremendous. It was a, be a great asset to this community to have them come into our community. And I believe we do have some pictures taken on some cell phones that we can uh, let you see later if you need to.
Okay.
Thank you.
Other public discussion? Roll call.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
No.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
No.
Motion carried.
Very good. Thank you. And, and thank you, folks from U-Haul. It is nice to see that building occupied.
Thank you.
Onto discussion item number two, and that is the zoning amendment to M-two heavy industry permitted and special uses. Michelle?
Michelle Spahnheimer, Housing Community Development Director. Very similar um, in procedure as we just discussed with the last item. Um, the request again has been made to amend uh, one of our zoning classifications, in this case, the M-two heavy industry district, um, which is quite prevalent throughout our community. We have a significant amount of M-two area uh, within, within the city limits. Uh, the request is uh, made to allow for uh, what we consider livestock wholesaling as a special use within the M-two district. And so that request again went before the Plan Commission for an initial discussion as well as a public hearing on the August fifteenth agenda that they had. Uh, the commission uh, in the same manner with a five to zero um, recommendation that the ordinances not be changed um, and basically not allowing this use uh, within the M-two district. Currently, that use is not allowed within any of our city zoning districts. So um, the ability to amend to consider a special use within the M-two would be the only option for um, that consideration of that use. And so um, that was the recommendation put before, from the commission uh, to the council. So again, in light of that, uh, I was looking for some direction uh, from a staff perspective um, as to how to proceed. Um, once again, we do have uh, the applicant here as well on this one that would like to um, present some comments.
Any motions, questions, suggestions, or directions?
I think that's what they wanted to do.
Okay. Would, would the applicant like to come up and um, plead the case?
Uh, Mayor Greer, uh, members of the council, I'm Adam Van Dyke. I'm with the Brown Winnick Law Firm in Des Moines, six-six-six Grand Avenue, Des Moines, Iowa. Um, I represent uh, Parks of Iowa, L.C. And I, I'm going to assume that, that the council members already know a little something about this project. So I don't think we're going into all the detail that we could possibly give you, but I would like to just kind of open it up and then I'm going to have um, the president of the company go through and we have a, just a brief um, PowerPoint for you guys to look at. And then he can talk a little bit more specifics about his operations and the company. As you know, we've, we've had, as Michelle said, we've been to P and Z twice. And a lot of information was given. There was comments from the public. Uh, there was a lot of concerns and various things that we've noted. Um, I'll probably address a few, or a handful of those right now briefly. Um, as to the, but what I don't, there's three options it sounds like that the council has um, that were given to you in a memo. And my understand, well, I shouldn't say understanding, my choice um, would be the first option. We want to move forward with the city council. I know that this meeting is more of an informational meeting this evening. Um, and then it'll be more of a public comment the next two hearings is my understanding at least. And we'd like the opportunity to, to be able to present this and go through that process. Um, we are planning on working with the um, city staff to come up with some language. We haven't done that yet. So you do not have any proposed language to the, what our amendment is yet. But we'll work with the um, staff and presumably city attorney to do that. Um, and then you'll have that in front of you, I believe, at the next meeting, maybe, maybe the, the third meeting to take a look at that, what we're proposing. Like Michelle said, this is going to be a special use. We were recommended to have it, it's currently, the property is a agricultural. Uh, staff recommended that we get it rezoned to M-two because that would fit that area the best in Marshall Town. It does appear that much of the property around there is already M-two. So that's how we, that's how we came up with that. The, some of the items that were discussed, um, and will probably be discussed if not tonight, the next meeting, some concerns were, you know, I think people hear that, and I'm repeating some of the stuff I've already said to P and Z, so I apologize for those of you that already know this, but um, obviously, the, the big one was the odor issue. Neighbors are concerned that this place is going to stink and I, you know, frankly, I completely understand that. And um, what we're trying to do is explain that we have odor control, um, and it's not an issue. And the, and I can go through, and I will briefly, of how we do that. But essentially, we don't have any manure pits. We don't have any outside storage of manure. It's all, uh, we just have concrete and we're going to see pictures of it tonight. And we, we use straw and we use sawdust. It absorbs the odor quite well. And, and the other communities that we've, that we're in, uh, we have not had any complaints of odor. And in your council packets, I'd like to direct your attention to definitely, there's a handful of letters, but two of them are from mayors of similar-sized cities, especially Atumla, stating that fact, that they've had no issues, no complaints, and there's no smell issue. So, I mean, I could stand up here and tell you that and, and, but I guess having a third party, mayors from other cities, you know, say, hey, this has not been an issue and they've been a, a good, good owner in, in the city is quite helpful. So I hope you consider those letters. The uh, and as I mentioned earlier, there's, what we're asking for is not a permitted use of M-two. So it's not as though we could just go in and put, we have to go to get a special use permit, uh, presumably from the Board of Adjustment, and there's various conditions that we have to meet. And one of those conditions presumably was going to be um, odor control. And if we don't control the odor, then we get our permit pulled, and we're aware of that. So we have every incentive to not, to make sure we're not, you know, sticking up the neighborhood, so to speak. There's going to be some additional traffic, uh, twelve to fifteen trucks per day, which, you know, in my estimation isn't a huge amount. Um, but there will be uh, obviously to get in and out of this facility, trucks that go in and out of there. Many of these same trucks are the ones that have already been going down that road from, to and from JBS. Uh, but we, just to give you hard numbers, we're planning on having twelve to fifteen trucks per day. We do have um, some, there was a question regarding, you know, do, do these places have odor, or I'm sorry, pet, pest control issues? We have measures in place for taking, making sure that we do not have any rodent issues. Uh, and we have it inspected um, regularly for that. Again, we have to, our site plan- Again, we have to, our site plan, we sort of have a develop, we have to, we have to go through the, obviously, the site plan with the city to approve our facility, and how it looks, where it is, measurements, et cetera, and building permits, and then also, as I mentioned, the special use permit. And there's, there was also a question, or some discussion regarding some air quality issues. I don't have any statistics for you tonight, I'm guessing you don't want to hear statistics, but I can tell you this, is that my client's been operating his facilities since, I believe, the 70s, and he's had zero complaints from the Iowa DNR, or anyone else for that matter, on air, air pollution or air quality, and he's had zero complaints in all the other states that they, that they operate in. They run a very clean facility, and I think, like I said, you have letters in your testimonial letters, in your, in your packet, that, that say just that. And then, you know, just one of the last things I wanted to mention was the, the reason we want to be in this spot, because, you know, frankly, we've, we've looked at various spots, and, and there's certain criteria that we look for, but this one's an ideal location, meets all of our criteria, and, and nobody's hiding the fact that it's, it's near JBS, who we work as a close partner with, and JBS wants us there, and we want to be there, and they're a good partner with us, and that's why we picked that spot. You know, right now, that property is sitting, I, I believe it's, there's nothing on it. And I think it's, I, I think I looked, or I did look the other day, I mean, the property taxes that it's generating is like $700 a year right now. You know, obviously, our operation would, would be a bit of an economic boost to the area, including paying property taxes. So, again, I'd like you to please consider those letters that we've received from Atumwa and Beardstown. I think you also received some letters from people in Newell, Iowa, that we have the facility in. And if we haven't already extended the invitation, I will now, but we would like to have all of you, one or more of you, come down and visit one of our facilities, so you can see firsthand what they're like. I think that's the best way for you guys, because you have a tough decision, obviously, but to go down and, and just walk into one of these facilities, and see what it's like, you know? It does it, is it clean, does it smell? I mean, get a firsthand idea of the neighborhood that we're in, and what it's like. We would be more than happy to schedule that, and so I'd encourage anyone of you to get ahold of me, or, or anyone to, at, at Parks to, to schedule that, we would, we would invite you to do so. So, at this time, first of all, I want to reiterate that we would like to move forward, move this forward to the next council meeting, and I would appreciate if you guys would give us the opportunity to at least come back and, and present this to you. I know you, we'll have other people talking, but if we could have that consideration, to at least be able to move forward with our, with our application, I would appreciate it. So, at this time, I want to introduce Lawrence Parks. He's the president and CEO, and he's going to kind of go through what the operation does, in a slideshow, and hopefully... We're too old, guys, so we got to figure out how to...
Use this down arrow. Yeah, there you go.
Okay, that's good. Okay. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Lawrence Parks, and I'm the president and owner of the Parks Companies, and I live in Wallace, North Carolina. So, first of all, I just thought it, you know, appreciate you guys having us here tonight, and the opportunity to speak with you. But we've been in business, like Adam said, since 1976. I grew up on a family farm. My dad had a livestock auction barn, mostly cattle, so I worked with him growing up. And then when I got out of high school, decided to start buying, buying hogs. And so we've built our business over the last 40 years, doing that. I've got five children, three of whom have graduated college, all working with us. So, I have a lot of desire to keep the business going, and continue to grow and expand it, you know, and keep it all in the family. The two that are in college, one will probably work for us, one won't, I don't think, but you never know. We also, besides buying like the kind of light pigs, heavy pigs that JBS don't kill, we market a lot of coleshouse, too, when they're done producing pigs. You know, they'll have about five or six litters typically, maybe three to four years old, and they're done producing, so they take those and turn them into sausage as well. So, we not only buy the pigs that are too light, or too big for JBS, but we buy the sows, once they're finished, too, so we provide a good service to the producers. In addition to that, we market weiner pigs and feeder pigs. We've got a couple truck washes ourselves, we run a transportation company. We also have some sow farms, and we also have some contract finishing barns. And so we know the difference between the two. You know, I don't, you know, our, like our buying stations don't handle near the hogs that confinement barn would have, and the pigs are only in and out, in and out, in a very short period of time. A lot of the animals are in and out within six or eight hours. They'll come in in the morning and be out by the evening. You know, we will have animals carried over during the night, but for the bulk of them, most of them will be in and out the same day. So, as far as Marshalltown, it's a really good location, it's close to the plant. You know, it's off in the northeast quadrant of the town, so, you know, we're still in the city limits, but we're right on the edge, on the verge of it out there. But it catches a lot of truck traffic coming in and out of the plant, and it's really convenient for producers shipping into JBS. So, you know, we planned initially to have, you know, maybe, you know, six or 800 head of animals a day. We probably won't start out at that, but that's what we're hoping to grow to. And like I said, most of them are shipped out, you know, that night. You know, as far as economic development to the city, you know, we'll have the construction. You know, use local concrete companies, you know, a lot of local contractors, like New Modern Concepts from Iowa, will probably be our builder. We plan to have five to seven full-time employees, one to three part-time employees. Like Adam said, 12, 15 trucks a day, but a lot of those will be the same trucks that are coming to JBS anyway. Some won't be, not all of them, because we will buy from other producers as well, that don't sell animals to JBS. You know, there's a whole list of, you know, other businesses in the community that will help, you know, sites, taxes, you know, feed companies, food, restaurants. You know, we, but, you know, we filled one page up here, and we had more that we could have put on there, but this just gives you an idea of, you know, support for the community that we'll have. You know, we work with JBS in other locations, like in Beardstown, Illinois, and Atumwa, Iowa. We have plants, our buying station's really close to those as well. So, we just want to, JBS had asked us to come and, you know, bring the animals here, you know, so they could bring them to us, instead of taking them into the plant. It avoids animal handling issues at the plant. They're set up to flow animals through the plant very quickly. They don't have sorting areas to sort, like we do. So, it just, it provides a service for them and the producers at the same time. So, producers, well, a lot of times they do, they put the hogs that fit JBS's specs on the truck, either first or last, and then keep ours on separate compartments, so they've dropped at one place or the other first, and then go to the other place and drop.
Can I ask for a point of clarification?
Sure.
Are you sorting at your facility, or do they, are they sorted at JBS? I'm unclear on that.
Right now, like what they do, when they come into JBS, anything that don't fit their specs, they sort out, and then we pick them up with a truck, and haul them up to our Ellsworth facility and, and sort them then. Because we'll have to sort out for how, different packers want different sizes of hogs. And so we sort for that size. So, going forward, they're trying to get them out of the JBS plant, so they're not bothered with them. And we'll sort and grade them at, at our facility.
Thank you.
Sure. Yeah, questions anytime, please, I'd rather have interaction. So. We just put a, you know, pictures up here, like too small. Like JBS's top weight is like 220 or 225, probably, to 325 pounds. And so hogs grow at different speeds in their life. You know, some pigs grow faster, some grow smaller. So, the ones that are too small or too big is what we typically handle. There was some talk at the P&amp;Z meeting that we were buying sick pigs from JBS, and nursing them back to health there. That's not the case at all. Like, we have no antibiotics, no needles, we're not allowed to in our facilities at all. So, the animals are only there, like I said, a few hours, you know, sometimes two or three days, probably, at the most. We've got a law that we have to have them out in five days, so we can't keep them any longer than that. But we have, in none of our facilities, do we have any kind of antibiotics or medicine or anything but in the pigs. Then we got just some pictures now, probably most of it going forward, but we've been up where the proposed site is, and you can see we're building on the far east edge of the property as well. And so, and here's just the design of what the building's going to look like. There'll be retention pond on the far west side, and you can see, like, the sawdust, manure storage, and everything's going to be on the west side of the building as well, you know, to, to keep it over on that side.
Can I ask again another question? What is the purpose of the retention pond?
Just all of rainwater off from the, from the building, and, et cetera.
And is it, I assume it's a man-made facility, and is it, does water go into the groundwater surrounding the facility at all?
It's set up to, there's, like, the rainwater obviously falls on the roof, and nothing's outside, so none of, none of the, none of it would be, you know, anything...
Manure, that's what I'm, I mean, I'm thinking of, any, any runoff from the facility.
But as far as like the driveway drainage, the drainage from the roof, things like that, would run into the retention pond, yes.
Okay.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Like our, we've got some graphics of several of our facilities that are in town, to give you an idea where, how they're located compared to what we're doing here. This is Atumwa, Iowa, and the JBS plant is just to the south of, of where we're at up there with the dot. And we also have a ma, a letter from the mayor of Atumwa, too, actually recommending that, that you guys approve us building out there. So, like Adam said, we've got several letters of recommendation and support, and, you know, coming from the mayors of other towns. I hope you take that into, you know, consideration.
I'll feel funny if I don't disclose that when I first learned that you were thinking about coming up here, and that you had a facility down in Atumwa, the first thing I did was call the mayor in Atumwa. And that was before he wrote this letter. He's also kind of a rising star among mayors in Iowa, because he's going to be the next president to the Iowa League of Municipalities. And he did tell me, it's been, it's in downtown, and they have not had a single complaint of any kind in that city.
Appreciate that.
I also say, I've been getting a lot of calls from people that really don't want a new facility that deals with hogs in town here.
I can imagine.
And then, full disclosure, my father-in-law was the president of the national pork producers, so I married a pig farmer's daughter, and she thinks the town ought to be renamed Bacon.
Okay.
That's all, go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, like I said, there's, there's just a lot of pictures here, so, you know, we just zoom in a little bit more on the next couple of them, to give you an idea. But you can see where the yellow star, and then all that below us is the JBS plant in Atumwa. And then, last time, we had a lot of pictures in our presentation to the P&amp;Z of newer facility, the facilities when they were new. And so these are all recent, recent pictures that we put in here, except for maybe one or two. But to give you an idea of what they look like after 10 or 20 years, or 25 years of use, so you can see what, see how well we keep them up. Like, this one was built in Atumwa 13 years ago, and you can get an idea of what the appearance is, and how we keep them up. Something, too, like we're talking about the dry manure, we use a lot of sawdust, you know, wood shavings, and that, you know, that soaks up a lot of the smell. I'm not going to sit here and say, there's not ever a smell, because I'm, you know, you might smell something occasionally, but it'll be minimal, and it'll be rare. And it's, if you go to, like, to the fairs and stuff, you'll see the pigs in the fairs. They're in wood shavings, just like what we have, so, you know, they try to, you know, do the best that they can, and that's what we do as well. The barns are cleaned out whenever they get dirty. You know, these are just, you know, like I said, a few pictures. Then we got our Ellsworth facility. It's, it's not in town, but it's right off I-35. You can see there's a house just, you know, just off to the east, and another one just to the southwest. You know, no problems with the neighbors, no, all the traffic up and down I-35. You know, we never have any complaints from anybody driving by, or anything like that, so. Even though it's not in town, we wanted to give you a visual of being right on the interstate in the high-traffic area. Same thing here, just some pictures, you know, show you the, what the facilities look like. See, this one's 21 years old. And there's the manure pile on the, on the outside of it, there, but, as you can see, it's mostly shavings. So, I mean, there's a little bit of manure mixed in there, but it's mostly, you know, mostly the wood shavings. Inside pictures again. Newell, Iowa. Been there since '09. It's not a new facility like we're building here, it's one that we bought, purchased, and, and remodeled it. We also have some letters from, like, this Spanky's C store right next door, of support. The Highway 7 Service Center across the, across the road from us, you'll have letters, and you should have letters in your packet from both of those guys for us. And you can see there, it's, you know, real close to, you know, real close to town as well, it's in town. Beardstown's the other one, just by the JBS plant. You can see that's right in town. You also have a letter of support from the mayor there. Now, building's been there 25 years, we've been in Beardstown. You can see here on this picture, you've got a Walmart Supercenter right, you know, right there, real close to us. The city cemetery is right across the street from us. Lincoln Land Community College is between us and JBS. So, there's some businesses there, you know, that, you know, a lot of people go to, high-traffic areas, and, you know, still no complaints from anybody. Sweet Springs is just another facility built 10 years ago, just to give you an idea. Same thing, you know, shavings, pins inside. They're all very similar. This one's going to be a little bit smaller than what these are, though, but they'll be built, same thing. You'll see the cement pins, steel gating, you know, it's easy to keep clean, they're well-maintained. Welcome, Minnesota, same thing, you know, seven, you know, 17 years old there. You know, same, just to give you an idea that they're all pretty similar. You see all this cement, steel gates, sawdust, shavings. There's a, there's a clean pile of shavings there that we use for, you know, storage and... Humphrey, Nebraska, building's 20 years old. You can see it's right on the edge of the city limits, but if you look, there's a golf course right across the street from us. The subdivisions you see down there, right below the golf course, were both built after we were there. There's a new one that's going in now, that's just about halfway done, that's being, it's being worked on, so it, it don't bother those people. And you also have a letter from the mayor of Humphrey in your packet as well. There again, same thing, shavings, you know, pins. You know, we, you know, we, like, we, you know, we promote, you know, a lot of 4H and FFA activities locally. Donate a lot of money to that, different schools, organizations, churches, hospitals, athletic teams. You know, we're really big into the community, and, you know, especially growing up with five kids, I like to, I like to really support kids a lot, you know, the best I can. So, I guess I hope you see through this, that we are good neighbors, you know? We do keep the facilities very clean, very up, you know, very, very, very well-kept up. You know, we really pride ourselves in that. And I guess, you know, showing you where we're, where we're located at, this isn't really a new concept, because we've done it other places, and we've got approval from, you know, I guess the mayor's about as good as you can get in, you know, these towns that we're in. And you've seen the letters of support from local businesses and things like that that we have. So, I guess with that, if there's any more questions, I'll be glad to answer any questions that you guys have.
Any questions or comments up here?
Only that, it's really nice to hear from you, because it's a really, a business I'm not familiar with, and it's an interest, it sounds very interesting. I unfortunately do not live in the area where this would be. And I've had overwhelming opposition from neighbors concerned about this facility. And so, that's what I'm facing.
I'm not surprised. People hear pigs, and that's the first thing they think of. But I hope, you know, and like Adam said, we gladly invite any of you guys to, to come up. I'll give you guys my phone numbers, you guys can call and talk to me anytime we want, or I can contact you guys if you have any questions, or anything. But we would welcome the committee, or a few of you guys, to come, come to one of our facilities and see, so that you don't have to go by, you know, you always hear, pigs stink. I mean, that's, I don't know. And, you know, if they're not treated right, whether it's a confinement building, or our building, they will stink. But if they're treated right, you can control the smell, you can control the odor. You may not be able to eliminate it altogether, but it can be controlled, and it can be minimized.
Our city is not immune from the not-in-my-backyard phenomenon. And recently, we had a memory care facility put in, and there was a big backlash. They thought the traffic would be terrible, people would be leaving the facility, that's our thing. It's gorgeous, it's, it's getting occupied well, and some of the detractors are now living there, and they really enjoy it. We had the same thing happen with another facility where many people older than 55 live. People in the neighborhood did not want that to happen. It's, it's, they've been a great addition to the community, so we're, like many other microdotons our size, there's a reaction to anything new that we don't know about. And then, once it's in place, we all think it was our idea, and the thing, you know, so it does happen.
I'd like to say, we would be a good neighbor, and we'd do everything we can to keep this facility like we do. facility like we do all of our others. It's really important for us to keep them clean because of, you know, pigs do get sick too if you don't have clean trucks, clean facilities. And, you know, from the biosecurity, we, if we had a rundown facility or a dirty facility all the time, producers wouldn't sell us pigs because they'd be worried about carrying the disease or a bug back home with them. So, we have to think of that too, besides the community. But to keep our business going, we have to run a very clean business.
Mr. Parks, I have another question. I do represent the area that, that your building is proposed for. If this does not go through, are there any alternative sites you have looked at in the Marshall County area?
We've looked outside the city a little bit, a little bit to the north and maybe a little bit further to the east. We really haven't found anything that would work. Part of, being this close, it's convenience a lot of times. It's just trucks are going to JBS anyway and they can drop at our place, drop there. And if trucks have to start running out of the way to get here, it's not as convenient, it gets more costly for them. So, we'd really like the opportunity to locate where we've picked out there. And like I said earlier, we're on the far northeast edge of town. You know, we're about as close to being out of town as we probably could be without being out of town, and I know we're not. So, we, you know, we have to abide by all the rules and go through this, but I don't know if we would build somewhere else or not right now.
And I have to, as Councilwoman Weren said, that I've had just overwhelming opposition to this. Many people already experienced, whether it's odors or truck traffic due to JBS coming in, and they have, are, are very much opposed to having that in their, in their neighborhood as, as you described, Mayor. And so, but I do appreciate the information that you have brought us today. Um, your facilities do look very good and, and the testing from other people are certainly, they, they speak highly of, of the operations that you run. So, thank you for bringing that to us today.
As far as the truck traffic, a lot of it's going to be trucks that are already coming to JBS anyway. Not all. There'll be some extra trucks coming in with the animals. And then sometimes the animals going out, it'll be trucks that dropped off at JBS as well, that would just come to our place and pick up. So, you know, we might have 12 or 15 trucks, but there might only be an addition of five or six or four or five. I don't, I don't know what the numbers are. It varies day-to-day, but, but not all of it will be increased traffic.
Other questions or comments?
I would say that I'm the fourth ward councillor and that's adjacent to this area. And there's several thousand people that live in that ward and I would have to say that, that we're not interested in that.
I wanted to add something else, Your Honor. Um, I also wanted to thank you for the updated photos because I was at the first P and Z meeting when they were just the new construction and it didn't sit well with me. So, I appreciate that. I still thought I'd see a pig, but that's okay.
And a couple of them in the background, you can see.
Okay, maybe so. I missed it.
We thought it was better without the pigs, but we could certainly have some with them if you want to.
Well, that's all right. I can imagine. But um, I, I do want to point out, it's not only the residential properties in that area that are concerned, it's also the recreation that we have in that area. We have, RC Flyers have land right near the property. They, you know, people take their kids out there, grandkids out there and fly remote-controlled aircraft. They also, there are people that go fishing out at Sand Lake in droves lately. It's just re, become a really nice area. And so, there's a lot of concern about the recreation. I'm not even talking about Nicholson Ford. There's a lot of areas out there. It's a beautiful area in Marshalltown.
I think as far as the RC Flyers, I mean, in some cases, we have planted like some trees, like at some of our finishing barns in the back, so they would grow up over, over a period of time when it'd block, could block the view between that and RC Flyers. As far as the lake, I mean, it goes back to the odor control. I mean, I think if they're driving by our facility, I don't think anybody will have a problem with what we, the way we keep them up and what we do. And the rest of it's odor. And I, one way that you guys could convince yourself is come, take us up on our offer and come to one of our facilities or come to a couple of our facilities and, and see. But I think appearance, I, I mean, I hope you didn't see anything wrong with the way they looked. And your concern is the potential odor. So, I would just, I would ask that you guys would, you know, at least a couple of you and maybe come take us up on that.
I think anyone else want to weigh in? Up here. Okay, now it's time to ask for public comment. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you guys very much.
James Zimmerman, Marshalltown, Iowa, Arnold Drive. I just have a couple of things. I've been a member of the RC Flyers since 1999. From what I understand, that's a flood plain there and many, many springs, we have not been able to fly because of the floods. Now, I wonder what they're going to do. If there's hogs, there's going to be manure. And when it floods, what are they going to do to protect the Iowa River and the rest of that, that area from any runoff into the river and the Sand Lake recreational area when it floods every spring? Thank you.
Thank you.
Just make a line.
Well, tonight, Mr. Parks got to speak a lot longer than all the people that...
I'm sorry, I hate to interrupt, but you have to say who you are and where you live.
Janita Boyd, 809 Patterson Lane.
Thank you. I, I know you, but...
I know, but it's, so, so, we've had more speaking from the other side than the people at Planning and Zone got to speak at that committee meeting. And there were a lot of people who wanted to speak. So, I live on the northwest side. I know we live in a, a community where they raise pigs. My grandfather did too. But every once in a while, we get the whiff and it is not pleasant. And I would not be for adding any extension of that business or anything associated with it within city limits or near the city limits. And I did my homework, as one lady said the other day. I went out and I sat and watched the intersection. That's a really busy intersection without adding any more trucks. And then there is, as Mrs. Weren mentioned, there's all these recreation areas around there that we're trying to make nice and there's a residential community. And then I went to three of the businesses there and I asked them, "What do you think about this?" And they all said, "Well, we want to promote business and small business, but this business is not appropriate at this location." And then, I, I listened to people that were here last time. I, I hope you all realize how angry so many people are in this community, about this community not sticking up for the people who live in that area. Instead, sticking up for a business that has not, in my opinion, been a good neighbor. And it is time for this city to start thinking of those people and thinking about the reputation of this town. We want to have a nice uptown, but then we want to put this on East Main Street. So, we keep shooting ourselves in the foot. And I hope you'll really listen to how unpleasant it is for people to live in that section of town. And in my opinion, they just get ignored. So, it's time for us to think about the citizens of this town.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Greer and the council for an opportunity to speak. I'm going to modify the comments that I made at the last Planning and Zone.
Tell you, tell us who you are.
I will tell you who I am first. Leland Searls, Ward Four, resident, 911 May Street.
Thank you.
I too experienced the smells coming from the JBS plant. That plant is large enough that it has to have a state air quality permit. And I haven't had time to pull that permit and see what the limits are on their emissions. I will say this, it's obvious to me, looking at the slides that Mr. Parks presented, that any facility located near another pork processing plant will have its emissions masked by that larger facility, if there are any emissions. That's a very obvious thing. And that would happen here in Marshalltown. So, any additional output is going to be hidden by the fact that there is already a large processor nearby. And that's with most wind directions. I think of Ward One and I think of Woodbury School and the children in it. When I think about air emissions from any kind of animal, animal processing facility, whether that be a confinement out in the country or it be something located in town. Let me say also that in a past life, a few years ago, I was the director of the air quality program for the Iowa Environmental Council. So, it was my job to be familiar with the criteria pollutants, which are the major regional pollutants that are heavily regulated, and the hazardous air pollutants, which are the locally toxic pollutants that tend to drop out within a few miles downwind from the emitting facility. The kinds of pollutants we're talking about here are hazardous air pollutants. So, within two or three miles, presumably they're diluted enough to be no, no longer hazardous to anyone downwind. But within the city of Marshalltown, most of Marshalltown would be subject to the health problems that would be caused by emissions from JBS and this facility, to the extent that those happen. There are any of a number of those hazardous air pollutants that come from swine manure. Two of the leading ones are hydrogen sulfide, the rotten egg smell, and ammonia, which would come from the urine side after one or two days of sitting around. Those two are well-established to have significant public health impacts on people living nearby. There was a study done in Iowa comparing two elementary schools, one at one mile distance downwind during the winter months from a confinement and another one five miles away from a confinement. And the rates of respiratory illness in those elementary school children differed widely. You can guess which one, which children suffered the most. At one mile downwind, there were much higher rates of asthma and other upper respiratory infections. Now, I realize that this is a very small facility. I realize that they are using dry bedding to absorb most of the manure. I tend to believe them when they say that most of the odor will be absorbed and contained, but there is the possibility for accidents. In attention, there is the possibility that even a small amount added on to, on top of the emissions from JBS that are allowable under a state permit will be just enough to cause small bumps in public health problems. The most susceptible people to that will be children with developing lung systems and seniors with compromised lung systems. But I'll add that anybody can suffer from those pollutants. The healthiest person here tonight, whoever that might be, could suffer. Less likely, but it's a possibility.
I hate to interrupt, but in my life, if I'm making an argument to the Supreme Court, I get a yellow light and a red light. Up here, we're confined to these 25-cent timers, three minutes. You're over, so if you can wrap it up, that'll give it an opportunity for the many other people that are here to speak.
Okay, well, I've never argued before the Supreme Court and I don't see that forthcoming in my future. So, I will say that just to err on the side of caution, this facility really should not be in the city limits and it should not be near Ward One or the recreational areas or the waters over there, including a wetland complex, and it should not be near the businesses. And so, my concerns are air quality concerns, odor, schmoder, what's in the odor? The odor contains well-known toxic air pollutants. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is April Long. I also live at 911 May Street. I'm a homeowner at 911 May Street. This evening, I heard the representatives from Parks talk a lot about their convenience in wanting to have this facility located near JBS. Their convenience should not outweigh our quality of life. If any of you were out last week, you probably noticed the severe odor problem that was coming from JBS. Now, we're going to add more odor potentially to our community? That's not a good thing. As Leland said, there's a health issue also here from the toxins released into the air. And the air, just the air quality, not being able to breathe or to be able to enjoy being out. That is an area of town with a lot of recreation and a lot of natural beauty. The potential of flooding and an accident happening there is not worth the risk. I would also ask you to consider this. If you open this up, change the regulations to allow livestock within the city limits of Marshalltown, are you also opening that up for residences, individual residences to house livestock such as chickens or maybe somebody wants a cow? That could be a bit of a slippery slope. So, I would respectfully ask that you deny this project for the people of Marshalltown. Thank you for your time.
Scott Van dywall, 2893 Abbott Avenue, Marshalltown, Iowa. Mr. Mayor and council members, here on behalf of Marshalltown RC Flyers, we occupy the property directly adjacent to the north of the proposed facility. One thing I wanted to add in addition to what Jim brought up, the structure that their proposed building there would basically shut down our flying operations. It's, it's not only the, the smell and the other issues, but we can't fly over occupied buildings. So, once they build that there, we're, we're basically done. And I certainly appreciate his offer to plant trees, but that would only add to our, our, our issue as, as model aviators. So, you know, our club does a lot of stuff in the community to try to expose young people to the wonderful career and opportunities in aviation. And we would really like to continue to be able to do those things. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Larry Ginter. I live at 3141 Davidson Avenue at Rhodes, Iowa. I'm a retired family farmer. I raised hogs for 36 years and a member of Iowa Citizens for Community Improvement. And I have a statement I'd like to read to you folks. To the Marshalltown City Council, on behalf of myself and over 5,100 members of Iowa CCI around the state, we stand in solidarity with those who are opposed to this facility being built on East Main in Marshalltown. We have major concerns about the proposed facility being built within the city limits. This facility will impact the health and well-being of local residents and businessmen by causing odors, ammonia, and hydroxyl sulfide, flies and other air pollutants. This facility will impact the quality of life of local residents by lowering their property values, robbing them and their families of enjoying the outdoors and forcing them to deal with screening hogs at all hours of the day. This facility will impact the, uh, excuse, sorry. This facility would cause unnecessary stress on the hogs being handled and moved many times and stressed unnecessarily, causing potential death to some of the hogs. This facility raises concerns about the spread of disease for hogs and humans. Due to the overuse of antibiotics to spur growth, these hogs can spread antibiotic-resistant bacteria, viruses and fungi to humans, posing a danger to workers at the facility and the community at large. This facility has not laid out a clear plan for how they would handle the disposal of dead hogs and how long it would take for rendering trucks to remove the dead hogs. Now, when I was raising hogs, they had 24 hours. But it means that there's so many hogs around the state that are living in these facilities, I don't know what the time is for, to remove these dead hogs. This facility relies on massive agribusiness factory farms... This facility relies on massive agribusiness factory farms that have pushed the independent family farm hog farmer out of business and decimated so many of our rural communities, destroyed small-town businesses, and polluted Iowa's waterways. This facility raises too many questions. What is the plan to deal with the manure generated by keeping up to 1,000 hogs in confinement? If a local farmer is taking this manure, we want to know. Where is your social consciousness? Damage to one is damage to all. No farmer should accept manure from a facility like this trying to operate in a town. And believe you me, when they say that won't smell, it will smell. I've been, I raised hog for 36 years, I ought to know. And when they show these, it was really a slick sales pitch because it doesn't show the inside of the facilities when the facilities are full of hogs. Okay?
And I hate to interrupt again, but we're over the three-minute limit again.
Okay. On behalf of our over 5,100 members, who are farmers, workers, teachers, students, and small business owners, health code givers, and others, we ask that you accept the planning and zoning recommendation and vote this facility down. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Patricia Charler. I live at 204 East Lincoln Street. I grew up at 410 North Third Avenue. My mother still lives there. And we deal with the stench that Marshalltown promised when they allowed Monfort to expand that we would not have. And we gave all kinds of things to Monfort to encourage the business, and we got stink. And it's bad enough that some of us in our neighborhood get hives frequently, we get migraines frequently. The stink was horrible over the weekend. And it's bad enough during the week, but this last weekend was bad, and I was one of them with the lovely hives. I didn't appreciate it. I have problems with sulfur. And the hydrogen sulfide makes my breathing, at times my lungs start to fill with water, and I struggle. I'm not the only one in my neighborhood. I also noticed that we don't have a clue, how many hogs does JBS reject per day to get the six to 800 to 1,000? Also, before, in dealing with some issues with Monfort, there were hogs coming in that were diseased that could not be sold. What happens to those hogs? How are they rendered? What happens to them, et cetera? We also have a retention pond. Is the retention pond at the other places checked by the city water department, the sewage plant? Do they have problems with bacterial growth and other issues that would prevent when the pond needed to be drained every so often, that they could not then do so because it would not be allowed by the state of Iowa into the Iowa River? We've had issues before. Also, the retention pond will be level. The ground will be dug out for the pond, and that dirt will be used for the building, but the pond will be ground level, so flooding, it's there. Also, where are the hogs going to be sorted? Will that be all done inside so there won't be any runoff from the driveway? I need to know those things. There's a lot of questions here that I'm not getting answers. And if I were one that was going to do a visit to one of their plants, I would want it to be an unscheduled surprise visit so I could see how the plant is while it's really operating and not on a good day when we've restricted the number of hogs and done special cleanup so that it looks good. And while we were having the zoning commission meeting, someone contacted a resident from Otumwa, and they said they do have an odor problem there. And it's just like, I'm sure the city of Marshalltown doesn't get a lot of complaints from the residents. We've given up that anybody cares that we have such horrible odors from Monfort, JBS now. We don't feel that anybody cares enough for us to call. So if they're not getting complaints at these other cities, I question, you know, I think we should do a little survey in some of the neighborhoods and see what the citizens say, not necessarily the mayor. Or does the mayor live next to the facility? I'd like to know that, too. I got a lot of other questions. I think there's a lot that needs to be reviewed before things get too far down the road because the north end of town is frustrated, and we don't feel that we're, our concerns are much of a concern to anybody. But we do pay taxes, we do support city projects, do donations, we would like to be considered. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the time. My name is Steve Kennedy, and I live at 301 South 16th Avenue, within a couple blocks of the far east end of town. It's in the neighborhood of all the brick houses. If you've been through that neighborhood, you know that it was hit pretty hard by the tornado. Roofs can be replaced, buildings can be repaired, garages replaced. We lost four huge shade trees. It's gone. We can replace the trees, but not with what was there. My concern is that we have no idea yet what impact the tornado has had on property values. And I'm thinking, I understand the problem is perception here. The word pigs, people looking for a place to buy are not going to want to buy near a hog facility. I urge you to accept the recommendation of the zoning commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
I'm Vicki Schaefer. I live at 806 South 6th Avenue, and I have the proud distinction of being the most frequent caller to complain to our odor control people who are wonderful. Anyway, I'm just, I want to say I'm very thankful that this whole project has come up because it's given our community the opportunity to, for you to hear how we feel about what JBS has done to our community. And we know they could do so much better. We just have to make that expectation of them, and they'll live up to it, but we have to demand it. Thank you.
Thank you, Vicki. I can attest to the fact, because we get weekly reports on the council.
Good evening, Lee Botter, 401 Orchard, Marshalltown. I'm going to take it a little bit different angle, okay? First of all, thank you for listening, and thank you for planning and zoning to listening because we were there a really long time. And I want to thank the other residents that were there the other night. We, I took a quick poll, and we had 82 opposing. There were four unknowns and nine support, but six of those supports came from the Parks group. Okay, so in reality, I don't necessarily weigh that because, you know, they're not paying taxes here yet. It depends what you guys do. But the angle that I'm going to take is the vision angle, okay? I wanted to find vision for you, the ability to think about or plan for the future with imagination or wisdom. That's why you guys were elected. That's why you're sitting where you're at. In respect to the Chamber of Commerce, this comes from their website. Positive growth resulting in a healthy environment where businesses, organizations, families, and individuals can thrive. The chamber is committed to the success of community improvement and investment projects, recognizing the quality of life is important for the area industries and their employees. You guys worked hard. Okay, everybody has seen this, this plan. Jessica, you did a great job on this and leading the team on this. I want to go to goal number four that says partner with citizens for nonprofit, for-profit, nonprofit, and others to improve quality of life. Objective number three says, continue participation on Vision, Marshalltown's aesthetic subcommittee. Okay? Is this the vision that you want for Marshalltown? That's a huge, huge question. Does this meet the goals that you guys have established for our city? I think not. And I think my fellow citizens, my neighbors, my friends, my other business owners, it does not meet the goals that you guys have established for us. They have touched briefly about the flooding of the area. When we left the planning and zoning committee, a few of us went out to the presentation at the Grimes Farm, and it was awesome. Gary Brandonberg was doing a presentation on the Iowa River. You guys all know my love for the Iowa River and preventing drownings, et cetera, but he was talking about how the Iowa River changes its course over history. And the presentation, when it ended, and we asked him specifically about this area, and he said, it's not if it will flood, but it's when it will flood and the impact to the surrounding areas. So please take that under consideration, and I would encourage you to have this go dead. Thank you.
That was perfect timing. The last sand just dropped.
Jack Stansberry, 508 Newcastle. I've been a lifetime resident of this community, and all I have to say is, this isn't what we want. I'm not knocking their facility. I'm sure they have beautiful facilities. I don't think we want to put hogs in the city limits anymore. We need to stop, and it needs to start here. That's all I got to say. Thanks.
Good evening. My name is Doris Aragon, and I live on North 8th Avenue, and it's directly behind JBS. I came here not, I wasn't going to say anything, but I have to. I live on that side of the town, and I just want to thank you all for letting us speak up. And that, on that north side area, there's a lot of people that live over there that don't have a voice, and they won't speak up, you know, because they are minority. One thing that I want you all to think about is, with Woodbury getting their new park, we're seeing so much more people outside spending, you know, spending time down there. There are a lot of people that use that bike trail. There, the flyers over there, you know, we have a good time sitting there watching those go, and then there's the possibility of them having to quit what they're doing, and they've had that land for a long time. I don't think that's fair to the residents that are here. I just want to say also that with this, I mean, they're, they are only bringing what eight to 10 jobs. I think Marshalltown needs a lot more for the risks that we're, you know, you're taking to bring them into our community. There's a lot to weigh in as far as the people, our environment. We've heard a lot of people talk about that, the air control, the young people, you know, we have Woodbury right there. And a lot of those are low-income housing that's back there, too, and a lot of them do have young children, so they'll be the first ones to, you know, get the effects of what's going to happen there. So just think about all the outside activities that we have, and that may stop with the land that's back there, the wildlife that's back there. We might not see them back there anymore, so just kind of keep that in mind, you know, we're all here, and we're all in this town. We pay taxes, and these people don't live here. You know, they're coming from North Carolina, and it's, it's, yeah, they're going to bring jobs for the construction, but in the long run, it isn't very many jobs. So just keep us all in your minds, please, whenever you vote on that. Thanks.
Thank you, Doris. One of the most fun things I've gotten to do as a mayor was show up at Woodbury the day that they had the ribbon cutting for that playground. They were hoping to get 100 volunteers. 300 people showed up, and they did it in two few hours than they expected. It was about 105 degrees, 95% humidity, and I was wearing a wool suit. That was the bad part, but it was fun watching all the kids look at that playground. It really was. Any other speakers?
Ken Hesmer, 2003 Timberline Road. That's three and a half miles from this area, so my residence isn't involved, but I know it's three and a half miles because twice a day or more I drive to my business, 100 South 18th Avenue and 2000 East Church Street, 14 acres on one site and four on the other. I think you've covered a lot of things here, but just, and we obviously got hit with a tornado, a couple million dollars of the damage, 400 and some automobiles, quite a bit of insurance, and we are nearing somewhat the end of playing games with insurance companies only in 13 months. We're considering a million-dollar investment. That may not sound a lot, like a lot, considering what landings in those places are. One of the things I've asked some realtors, what will this do to the value of our property? And they looked at me rather foolishly. I said, well, I think I know the answer to that, but I would like to hear it from a professional, that this will not help the value of your property. Thank you.
Lonnie Hoagland, 909 Stegman. I'm the owner of Hoagland Auto Plaza. I've had the privilege to speaking with the ma'am from the Y and the gentleman from, that wants to do this facility. They both are in favor of it, have great ideas about it. I guess the word I'd like to say is I'm frustrated with government that we have to waste all this time on such a simple thing. It just needs to be no in the city.
Mic is still open. We do have a closed session hearing after this, and we still haven't gone to the public comment time.
Can I say something?
You may.
If this is a discussion item, and the staff needs direction on that issue, I would make a motion to direct staff to not consider this any further and go to a vote on that proposal.
Is there a second to that motion?
I will second.
Further discussion?
Again, I appreciate the work that's been done to present this to us, but I think that many residents have spoken, have contacted us as individuals, and I don't think my mind will change any from the information that I've heard tonight. Again, I appreciate that they're facilities, but again, I am not in favor of having it in my community.
Thank you. Seeing nobody raising a hand for further discussion, let's call the roll.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Staff has its directions sign. It is now time, I'm sorry?
My next question would be, the next item is in conjunction with that, and I would also make a motion to, to not pursue that, or direct staff to not pursue that any further.
Discussion. Roll call.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Thank you. Gentlemen, thank you. That was a good presentation. We are now on to the public comment.
Oh, we have a number. Please fire across update.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that one. I scrolled too far down. Yeah. Police and Fire Building Cost Update.
Good evening. Diana Steiner, Finance Director. So we're funding the Police and Fire Building through bonds, and we've accumulated about $300,000 in interest. So our total revenues to date is $18.2 million. Out of that, we have spent $15.8 million contractually. We still have about $1.8 million we're obligated to pay. So not yet committed is $661,000 before tonight's actions that you did. You did approve all the change orders from the contractors, and on the consent agenda was on, was some equipment. So that leaves a balance of $515,000 that has not been yet committed. Any questions?
Do we have a total amount that's been accumulated thus far for those items that could be recouped as part of a discussion, what that number looks like, or an estimate at least?
I don't have that in front of me. I don't know what Justin does.
Good question.
Just out of curiosity.
Yeah, I would say at this time, that's an estimate, Councilor Isom, but legally, is this something we should talk about in an open session? I want to make sure before I...
Maybe I should rephrase the question then. The estimate of total dollar amounts and change orders that have been accepted thus far for delays we've incurred?
That I would have to actually do the math and add them up for you, Councilor, but we can certainly do that for you. I don't know that... I don't know that number off the top of my head.
It's an item that we will continue to discuss.
Curious. That could be, could that be sent to just council?
I guess I wanted to, I appreciate the work even with the issues that we've had. Appreciate that we have kept this project under budget and in looking at, at making sure we have a good quality facility. We're only going to do this once, so I think that, I'm just really pleased with the work that the staff and the construction folks have put in to make sure we're doing it right, and again, keeping us under budget at this point.
And I just have to jump in and say, Justin, you've not only had that building as part of your responsibility checking with story construction all the time, you've had to deal with the tornado, and you've been understaffed, so I hope people out there that are watching this appreciate just what a whale of a job you have done for this city, truly. Is it time for public comment now? Let's do it. Now, I have to read another disclaimer, similar to the one that you heard in the beginning. Actually, I don't think anybody arrived after I did that, so I'll just do like the judges do and tell the jury, hey, what I said before, pretend I just said it.
This is distinctly different.
It's distinctly different?
There is, the last item.
All right.
Good try, Joel.
Members of the public, I was talking like a car salesman on the radio. Members of the public may make comments on any item which is not on the agenda during this time. The speaker shall approach the microphone, state his, or her name, address, comment should be limited to three minutes unless the longer comment is authorized by the mayor. That is different. The speaker shall direct comments to the mayor council as a whole. The mayor and councilor shall not engage in discussion or debate on items raised by the members of the public, and no action may be taken on items raised in public comments in order to comply with the open meetings laws. I think I did that in one breath. Now, does anybody want to approach the microphone and talk about something not on the agenda tonight?
Lee Botter, again. I just want to say thank you for listening to the citizens.
That was a record. Anyone else? Oh, let's move, let's entertain a motion to adjourn.
To motion to go into closed session.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
So moved.
Well, we have to read the disclaimer on that one, too, probably.
Jerry can read that one.
Sure, Jerry wants to read the motion with all the statutes.
This motion by Isom, second by Cahill, was that?
Yes.
Close session pursuant to Section 21.5, Subsection 1, Paragraph J of the Code of Iowa, to discuss the purchase or sale of particular real estate only where premature disclosure could be reasonably expected to increase the price the governmental body would have to pay for that property, or reduce the price the governmental body would receive for that property. The city of Marshalltown has an attorney-client relationship with Attorney Roger Shell, appointed as city attorney on May 5, 2014, and with Lynch Dallas PC by council resolution approved May 8, 2017. And there may be council action by motion following the closed session if directed by the city's attorney. And the time is?
I've got 7:43.
She's still got to shut things down, but we can do a vote on that.
Then I have to.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, let's call the roll.
Weirin?
Here.
Yes, on the motion to go into closed session?
Sorry about that.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Martin?